Go ahead, Lisa.
Okay. Good evening. This is the call, the Wilmet Public Library Board Meeting to order on January the 18th, 2020 at 6:31 PM. And at this point, can we have a roll call?
Certainly. Trustee Fishman.
Here.
Trustee Nealon. You're muted, Trish. We see you.
Sorry, I'm here.
Thank you. Trustee O'Keefe.
Here.
Trustee Riddle is absent. Trustee Summer.
Here.
Trustee Wolf is absent. And Trustee McDonald.
Here. And do, should, and we should just do, do you just take a picture or should we cite that we have two representatives from the League?
Yes, I see that we have Georgia Gephardt and Mary Lawler from the League. Welcome. And we've also got three members of our staff. I see Patsy DeVono, John Risco, Marty Bellefontaine, and me, Anthony Austin, your director.
Thank you. At this time, it's time for public comment. Is there anyone that would like to address the board?
I would like to address the board.
Okay.
Okay, so as you know, my name is Mary Lawler, and I am here tonight from the League of Women Voters of Wilmet. My position this year has been to head up our Community Education and Engagement Good Governance Focus Area. And our co-presidents Wendy Zahn and Anne Sullivan authorized me to speak for the League tonight. I think you may have received, you all may have received a letter, an email from Wendy and Anne. And I'm here just to really reiterate what was in that letter and urge the library to put back up on the website the historic board and committee meeting materials that had been taken down from the website when, when it was revamped. I know the email also referred to historic board videos, and we see there are board videos on the website going back to 2017. So my comments tonight really are just focused on the meeting materials. We really appreciate the board, the library's new website. It has a lot of great information, including on the financial information page. Although just as an aside, that page is kind of hard to find. It would be good to put some more obvious links to it. And so, but, but with respect to meeting materials, everything earlier than just a few months ago is gone, other than agendas and minutes. So none of the board meeting materials that the board looked at and that had been posted is on anymore. And that really makes the library an outlier in Wilmet with respect to government bodies and historic meeting materials. The Village Board, Park Board, District 39 and District 203 school boards all have meeting materials going back many years, not just a few months. And we really hope the, the library of all our local governments would be a leader in keeping historic meeting information on its website. And we hope that it will be a good source of information for Wilmet residents seeking to understand what's, you know, their library board, perhaps engaged with the library board, maybe run for election, or even just vote in an informed way. So we hope the library will work towards more information in that. So thank you all for your service to our community.
And thank you, Mary. And you should be the, the individuals that sent the letter will be receiving a letter from me tomorrow.
Okay.
In terms of what the library's position is, and so we thank you for your interest in terms of transparency. We feel we are transparent, and I'm glad that you cited what the other village entities are doing. But one of the things that we look for are best practices within the library systems. Also, we looked and tracked how much were the sites were, what sites were visiting, and very few people were viewing those sites. And I believe that you can attest that any time that you have requested something from Director Austin, you've gotten it pretty speedily. So I don't think it's a case of being, of trying to be transparent. I think that the new website just got up in October. It's, it's a work in progress, and we are constantly working on it. And we look to put what most people look for. And while we might not only cite the minutes, we put any major reports on, on that, on the website. And I think the other thing is, we have 100 years of minutes. So I think in terms of our archives, we've got our archives. I think in terms of, and as you stated, you've got the YouTube that has all our board meetings since we started recording. So I think that's my thought. I think some of the other board members will be working on the financial page and some of the other things, but we appreciate it. In terms of encouraging people to run for the board, when it gets near election time, there generally is a push in both electronically as well as in the newsletter. So thank you. In terms of what the requirements are and what's needed in terms of when that season starts. So thank you. Okay. Are there any other comments? From the public? Okay. At this point in time, you've got your minutes from the November 16th, 2021 meeting, and there is one correction which Director Austin has already talked to in terms of correcting. This is Gephardt, Georgia's last name. Are there any, is there any other corrections? Can we have a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of November 16th, 2021?
I'll also motion to approve those meeting, minutes from the meeting of November 2021.
Thank you. Trustee Wolf has moved to approve the minutes from November 16th, 2021. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Trustee Summer has, has seconded the motion to approve the minutes. Is there any additional discussion? Okay. Had been none, can we have a roll call to approve the minutes from the November 16th, 2021 meeting?
Certainly. Trustee Fishman.
Yes.
Trustee Nealon.
Yes.
Trustee O'Keefe.
Yes.
Trustee Riddle is absent. Trustee Summer.
Yes.
Trustee Wolf.
Yes.
And Trustee McDonald.
Here. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll turn it over to our treasurer, Trustee Summer, for the treasurer's report. Oh, wait one minute. There are no presentations. So let me just note that there are no presentations for this meeting. And now we'll turn it over to the treasurer's report with Trustee Summer.
Thank you, Trustee McDonald. I just have a couple of small comments. As you all looked at, there was a small grant receipt of $1,300. I know it's small, but I didn't know what it was, so I asked. It is a quarterly rail support grant that we receive. Another item that caught my eye was there was a check for $16,775 in December to Computer View. And it seemed kind of high for computer maintenance, but according to John and Anthony, it actually is a quarterly fee we pay them for computer maintenance. Utilities tend to be running under budget, but keep in mind with the winter heating bills, they generally will probably catch up to a more on budget. So even though they look pretty far under budget now, the winter will change that. And probably the only other comment, I was talking to Trustee O'Keefe. And if you're looking at the financials in December, it looks like that we have a year-to-date loss of net loss of $1.6 million. And I just want to, if John can correct me if my explanation isn't completely accurate, but it really represents the operating expense, income and expenses, less the distribution of any funds from the Special Reserve Fund. So, you know, we did put, have a fairly significant outlay of our, I believe it's our final, you know, large payment for the capital project. So we really don't have what would I consider an operating loss of $1.6 million. Does my explanation make sense to everybody? Anybody have questions on that? Concerns? All right. Any questions that are on the rest of the financials, checks, anything? All right. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the bills and salary check detail?
I move to approve the bills and salaries detail.
For November and December 2021?
Yes.
And I will second that.
Thank you.
So Trustee Fishman has seconded the approval of bills and salaries check detail for November, December 2021, after Trish Nealon, Trustee Nealon moved, made the motion. Is there any additional discussion regarding November and December bills and salaries? Okay, being none, can we have a roll call?
Certainly. Trustee Fishman.
Yes.
Trustee Nealon.
Yes.
Trustee O'Keefe.
Yes.
Trustee Riddle is absent. Trustee Summer.
Yes.
Trustee Wolf.
Yes.
And Trustee McDonald.
Yes. Thank you. At this point, we trend, we move to action items. Six of the seven trustees were present for the December 14th review of all our policies. They, those six approved us bringing forth the policies with some changes that have been made, which I'll just briefly go over with the policies. And prior to that, Anthony, Director Austin's procedure is basically he and his leadership team get together and they look over what, say, for instance, in the event of general rules of conduct. And so they look and they talk about it and come to agreement. Then it goes to legal. Then generally, after it goes through legal, we see it. And so that was at the point where we discussed it. I don't know if you want to add anything else in regards to the procedure?
Director Austin.
Okay, so the first policy that we approved is the COVID-19 vaccination policy. It's a new policy. And some of the changes that were suggested to that policy, basically what that policy is doing, and I'm just going to do it, it's basically looking at what is being, happening with the state. And so it is a fluid policy. And so what we do is generally, it's putting in practice what we've been doing. And so is there any discussion on the COVID-19 vaccination policy? And I think we applaud the efforts that Director Austin has been doing with the COVID-19 policy, because when we get to two comments, two of our patrons have complimented us on keeping things safe. So we've had more people for it over the last two years, I think, than against it. The next policy is the General Rules of Conduct Appendix 3D. And a lot of paper. What that does is basically put detail of what is acceptable behavior in the library. And in some cases, it will be posted so that the public knows. So is there any discussion regarding Appendix D for General Rules of Conduct? The next update is to Policy 5, Financial Management. We passed that policy earlier last year, but upon having our audit, there were two additions, one in terms of financial management for outstanding checks and capital assets. So those are the additions to Policy 5. Okay. And then the next policy regards library, any discussion on that one, financial management? Okay. Next policy decide, talks about the library facilities. And it covers a wealth of topics in terms of just giving, providing more direction as to things such as basically okay.
Lisa, I pulled it up.
Okay.
Such as the disaster plan, safety drills, smoking, cleaning. Very miscellaneous.
Okay. Thank you. It's all in paper land. And then the last policy is Community Relations, and so it specifies a little bit more in terms of the use of library bulletin boards, distribution of materials, tabling, exhibits and displays. And one of the changes additions really was basically, yeah, so that's basically it in terms of just clarifying it. So it will be easy for the staff to implement the policies as well as to explain it to the community. Any other discussion regarding the policies?
I just have. Tracy.
I was just going to say, I really appreciate them, the library and the director being so forward-thinking in the vaccination policy. I fully support it, and I'm hoping that the staff feel the same way. I think it, as a patron who's in there all the time, I am very grateful that that is the policy. It's just a nice feeling to know that those people that we might be in close contact with, and for people that they may be, they're coworkers. So I'm very, very happy, and I fully support that policy in addition to the other ones.
Okay, Trish. Trustee.
Yes. I wanted to comment on the Community Engagement Relations Policy. I found, I find it really valuable that the library has really clarified who exactly our partners are and how there's mutual benefit between groups and how it singles out Friends of Library as an affiliate. And, and then also reflects an openness to work with partners in the future going forward. If, kind of keeps the door open to some good collaborations, if they may arrive.
And we look forward to your committee, Community Relations, exploring some of those relationships. So thank you. Okay. May we have a motion?
Yes, I move approval of the draft policies, COVID-19 vaccination policy, Appendix 3D, the General Rules of Conduct, the updates to Policy 5, Financial Management, Outstanding Checks and Capital Assets, and Policy 6, Library Facilities, and Policy 8, Community Relations, as presented.
Okay, may I have a second?
I second that.
Okay, well, well, Trustee. We get everybody a second, but thank you. Wolf has moved and Trustee O'Keefe has seconded the motion to approve, move the approval of draft policies, COVID-19 vaccination policy, Appendix 3D, General Rules of Conduct, Updates to Policy 5, Financial Management, Policy 5, Financial Management, the addition of outstanding checks and capital assets, Policy, Policy 6, Library Facilities, and Policy 8, Community Relations, as presented. Since we've had discussion, can we have a vote, roll call to approve them?
Certainly. Trustee Fishman.
Yes.
Trustee Nealon.
Yes.
Trustee O'Keefe.
Yes.
Trustee Riddle is absent. Trustee Summer.
Yes.
Trustee Wolf.
Yes.
And Trustee McDonald.
Yes. Okay. So now we turn over to about discussion items. And are you ready to give the capital repairs and project update when we turn it over to Director Austin?
Thank you. First of all, thank you so much for your review of those policies and for your thoughtful discussion and questions about those policies, both in committee and here this evening. We really appreciate being able to move forward with the comprehensive review of all of our policies and to be able to compile this information both for the staff and to soon be able to develop our policy page once our policy manual is complete, and to get that updated on our website so that we can share that with the community. We're really excited to have these steps taken, so thank you. All right, so an update about our 2021 capital repair project. So as you know, our project has essentially been complete since I would say September-ish. But it does have a bit of a long tail, and we've talked about that in our past several meetings, in that there were a few elements of the project that were held up through a number of matters that were out of control of the library and our contractors. Namely, our fires, our new fire suppression system, fire alarm system, not suppression, fire alarm system had some parts and components that were held up in production due to supply chain issues, and it wasn't able to be delivered and installed on time. That project was essentially completed in December when those materials were installed. However, recently, there was an inspection of those items when they were installed. And there were some challenges with the interpretation of the code by which that they were installed that led to us not being able to test them. You may recall that on January 3rd, we were planning to be open a little late. We were going to delay our opening until noon so that we could have the morning to test all of our new equipment. And unfortunately, we were not approved to proceed with the testing because there was a conflict in the code. So we've gone through our punch list. We've met with engineers. We've met with the installers and the inspectors as well. And we've reached a consensus about where we need to go with this. Effectively, there are a few fire alarms that were not spec'd to go into some of our back-of-house spaces, particularly in the basement boiler rooms. They're calling for a couple additional units to be installed. So we're waiting for the installation of that, that equipment. And once they're installed, then we can proceed with the final inspection and then proceed with the installer, the, the testing. So it is, it's still a little bit of a delay. The project is essentially complete, but these finishing details remain. We've been working on some finish work over the course of the last month. In fact, if you've been in the library over the course of the last couple of weeks, you may have noticed that it's, it's looking rather refreshed. We had a painter who went through here and touched up a lot of walls. And since we had some allowances left in a couple of our lines, we were able to have that painter handle a few areas that were on our wish list for a long time that required more professional handling than what the staff can, can ordinarily manage in their day-to-day duties. So there's a couple of large walls, particularly in the stairway in the center of the library, that wall that runs all the way from the basement up to the third floor, had some surface-mounted wire molds and had some fire alarm equipment that was mounted on it that is no longer needed to be installed there, but the wall needed to be dressed up and repaired. We had a professional work on that for us. They also worked on painting some other spaces for us and brightening up some areas where we had some dark paint or just plain needed to repaint some areas. So we've been able to work during this time to, to beautify the library as well as to do some really critical safety infrastructure improvements. So we're pretty thrilled with the way the project has gone. You may recall that this did kick off back in March, and we had a huge scope of work that included a comprehensive work on the exterior of the building with the repair of all of the brickwork, the parapet. We did comprehensive tuck pointing of the entire building. We renewed all the warranties on our mini roofs by recoding them and getting new surfaces and treating various leaks that were happening at the, at the roof level of the building. Later in the project, we went down to the lower level and dealt with water remediation issues related to water infiltration that we've been dealing with for actually probably a couple decades on the south side of the building, and that work was completed during the summer months. Concurrent with that, that, that was part of the drain tile work that we did. Concurrent with that, we started working on interior low voltage work as well as the comprehensive replacement of the electrical main. That was one of the biggest aspects of our project, and certainly from a budgetary standpoint, that was the most significant aspect of the project. We closed for a period of two weeks in August to complete the replacement of the electrical main as well as the main distribution power equipment. And as part of that project, we replaced all the cloth wire in the building. There were a number of cloth wires that had, had been there from many, many renovations ago. The building is a lot safer as a result of that. We consolidated a number of our electric panels and improved the safety overall of the library by consolidating a lot of that equipment. During that closure, we also did an update and replacement of some of the pavers in our parking lot. Since the building was closed, we seized that opportunity to do the first major work on our parking lot in over 10 years since the installation of those permeable pavers. So all that work was completed. And then following that work, we turned our attention back inside the library and started working on the low voltage installation work related to some of our computer work as well as our security infrastructure, our security camera system, as well as finally the fire alarm system that is nearing completion now. Like I said, there's a lot of finish work that was associated with all of that, and we're in the final days of that work. Last Friday, our contractors and our construction manager met with the staff and I, and we went through and completed the final punch list of the project. That was memorialized with our architect via email yesterday. And so now we have our, our documents in place to kind of start crossing all these items off of our list. We anticipate that we're going to be able to complete this work. You know, if everything goes as planned by the end of the month, we'll see how that goes. And I hope by the time we meet here for our next meeting in February that I can tell you that we're effectively complete and that we'll be able to close out this project and get any of the final invoicing resolved. Do you all have any questions about our capital repair project? Yeah, Lisa, go ahead.
I know when I talked to someone from Tesla, when it had gotten postponed, do you see any delay in actually getting the thought that there might be a problem with them being in supply in terms of the alarms?
The, the remaining equipment, I believe, is, is on hand, is, so it's just a matter of getting it installed at this point. So really, it's just going to be the final details of the installation, the punch list, the inspections and testing. So it's primarily administrative at this point. Any other questions? Yeah, Joan.
Did I miss something, or is there the need for that late closure, once they agree on some of the smoke detector, or the detectors and so forth?
Yeah, we're, yeah, so since we did have that planned for January 6th, and that didn't come to pass, will we still need to do that? We're going to do everything that we can to avoid have any impact on public operations. However, it's, it's possible that we may need to ultimately complete some of that work during the regular business hours. The crews can start early, and for a number of the inspections, they have been able to do a lot of that before the staff has even arrived for other aspects of the project. So it's possible that we may be able to scale this in a way that it wouldn't have an impact on staff. That said, I do think that there is an advantage to us close, having a delayed start on one of the days so that the staff has an opportunity to hear this new system firsthand, to know what this new system is like. So there's a new ADA code that is informed the way that our fire alarm system works. It's not just the loud buzzing that gets everyone's attention and then the flashing strobes. There's actually an audio announcement that accompanies it that gives instructions for what a person is supposed to do in responding to those fire alarms. So I would like, I would like for the staff to be able to see that, and per the policy that you all have just approved in Policy 6, we do hold regular drills at the library, and I would like to be able to complete a fire alarm drill with the staff with this new system. So I think it may be advantageous for us to do a late start, if even for just an hour or so at some point here in the next month. But we will give as much notice as possible when that time comes.
Thank you. I think you did a fine job of giving notice. I, I noticed it on Nextdoor or on your Facebook page. So I, I, I don't see a problem when it arises again. Thank you.
All right. Anything else related to the building? Okay, all right then.
Okay. Director, it's looking good. That's all I've got to say. Can't wait till we can have some programs in there. When COVID acts, when whoever, whatever the next little bug is acting right. Okay, ready for your director's report?
Certainly. Well, let me bridge on that for just a second and kind of say a little bit more. So there were some areas that were affected by the capital improvement project that have had an effect on some of our spaces. So to Trustee McDonald's point, the auditorium has effectively been off limits to the public for the better part of that closure. We're looking forward to being able We're looking forward to being able to reopen that room. And when the time is appropriate for us to allow gatherings again in that space. We may be able to start booking that room again for public use and have have meetings in that space again. We certainly had our meeting back there in November, but Omicron happened and now here we are again in the remote environment. The small meeting room is another space that has been impacted and has been used as a staging area for a good part of this project. And we're looking forward to being able to reopen that as well, both from the staff standpoint for meetings as well as for the public to have another area to go. And there are a couple of other areas that have also been closed. Some of our study rooms as well as the quiet study room have also been closed during this tenure for the project and we're looking forward to reopening those here shortly as well. So stay tuned for more updates on those spaces. All right, so on to my report. I'm really excited to tee off my report here this evening by sharing the news that I'm sure many of you have already heard, but I think it's the first public meeting that we're having where I get to share this news. So Wilmot Public Library has been named by Library Journal for the third consecutive year, a five star library. And what that means is that Wilmot Library is comparatively well used by its community compared to other library statistics in the nation. In fact, for our budget category, Wilmot Public Library is the number four ranked library in the nation. So for per capita visits, circulation, e-circulation, wifi use, database usage. Our community really takes advantage of the library. Our statistics and the public's use of our facilities are what have gained this accolade for the library. So we share this honor with our community. It is our patrons that helped us to achieve this ranking. So we're really excited to be recognized again for the third year. This is the fourth year that we've been recognized as a star library and the third as a five. So kudos to Wilmot Library for and its community for for that accolade. In my report this month, there's a lot of materials. I shared about 60 pages worth of content with you. So my usual director's report is 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 in that 20 to 30 page range and then this is the time of the year where we provide a year end summary to our progress towards a strategic plan. And I tried to even shrink the font on that to to make it a little bit smaller for you all, but I know it's a lot of text, a lot to go through, but we've accomplished a lot this year. And I will touch a bit on the strategic strategic plan here in a moment when I get through with the rest of my report. So I'll go through a few of the items from my report and if there's any questions that you have for me or anything that you want to pull out, by all means, pipe up at any point. So as we go through this kind of from front to back, I'm really thrilled to announce that we launched our new story walk on the west side of town. So in Hibbard Park, we now have a permanent story walk. You may all know our story walks from over here at Botman Park. We've had that in place for for quite some time now. However, those little signs get picked up and moved a fair bit. Recognizing that the community has really been invested in our story walks. And our partnership with the park district has reflected that they're very much interested in the library's presence in the parks. We were able to develop this partnership and to install a more permanent fixture. And our first permanent presence really on the west side of town. So we're thrilled about that. If you haven't already gone and take a look at it, it looks really attractive. So we we thank the the park district for their facilitation and installation of the signage that they did for us. In December, we replaced our mobility equipment. That's right at the entrance of the library. Our facilities manager, Marcos Levy, purchased a new wheelchair and walker for us. The mobility equipment that we had there had probably been there for at least 25 years and was definitely dated and there's better equipment out there. So we were happy to finally retire that old equipment and offer something better to the community. I wanted to to draw a note to one of our partnerships that continues to grow and develop. The Chamber of Commerce of Wilmot and Kenilworth has been providing the library with lists of new residents in the community as well as new businesses that have come to town. And our circulation department has been using the the lists of new residents to reach out to them. We were sending letters to those new residents, advertising the library's services and giving an opportunity to pre-apply for library cards and to become more familiar with all the resources that they have available to them as residents. We're doing the same with businesses. As you know, our our circulation policy that we adopted earlier this year or earlier in 21 offers business library cards and our new business librarian, John Ammonson, has been really developing his relationship with the chamber and has been using the list that we've acquired from them to to start reaching out to those businesses here in January to introduce us. So excited about that. In December, we officially launched the 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 official furniture for the welcome desk. If you've been in the building lately, you've noticed that we do have more intentional furnishings in those play in that place. And hopefully with a future renovation of that area, we can further improve the accessibility of that desk, but we do have a new desk there now. And that has proven popular. Moving down my list a little bit more in terms of digital services, I'm really thrilled to announce that adult services manager Jill McEwen has taken on the task of helping us better promote the accessibility of all of our digital subscriptions by enacting a proxy server. A proxy server effectively is going to make it easier for all of our patrons to access all of our subscription databases. As you know, we invest almost a half million dollars every year in digital resources. And a lot of those research resources which are included in the electronic services statistics at the back of my report are incredibly popular with our community. A lot of folks do research on a number of topics. And those research databases require authentication to get get access to them. Sometimes it's just as simple as entering your library card. Other times it's a number of steps that you need to jump through. And in some cases, those resources are only available inside the library's walls when you're on our IP address. In order to facilitate access to all those resources, we have enacted this proxy server which effectively acts as though the person accessing the resources is inside the building. And it makes it easy for you to access those resources as you only need to sign in once and then you have access to all of them. So there's a lot of technical know-how that has to go into developing this. It's not something that Jill or I were very familiar with. It's a new thing to us and we had to kind of learn by the seat of our pants. Jill really took on this project in addition to her normal responsibilities as she inherited some of this after Stephen Kobel, our digital services manager had moved on last summer. So we're thrilled that we're at the final stages of this. We went through testing last week and we'll be launching that service here by the end of the month. So stay tuned for a little bit more about about how our digital resource access is going to be improving, but huge step forward for us there. Another huge step forward that we take in December was finally the arrival of our automated material handling system. There is a picture of that in my report where you can see Patsy and Michael modeling in front of the AMH. We're thrilled that that finally arrived. As you know, that's been about a year in the making, getting that equipment in here after a number of hoops that we had to jump through to get it there, but it finally is here. Staff has been trained and the efficiencies that that system has created have created a wealth of opportunity for us already. Some tasks that can take hours are taking merely minutes for us. And it is pre-sorting a lot of our items, making it easier for the staff to handle things and get those materials back on the shelf or to patrons just that much more quickly. This is all part of the RFID project that we did earlier this year where you may recall that the staff installed a quarter of a million targets in every single physical item that the library circulates. This is the backend of that system that enables us to check in all of those items and sort them back to where they belong. So we're thrilled that that thing is in place and that the staff is able to use it. And if any of you would like a tour of how it works, you can certainly let us know and we'll give you a firsthand account. Or if you just want to peek in like some of the folks are doing in the back of the library there, kind of by the parking lot pickup. You can see it in action from the window. So we're thrilled to have the AMH. So speaking of RFID, I I wanted to note from the circulation statistics that our self checkout usage has really gone up markedly. You may recall that we had added a couple self checkouts early in 2020. Back in 2019, self checkout really only accounted for about 20% of our circulation. That was off of two units. We replaced those two units early in 2020. And then by the time we had seven units this last summer. Our our total circulation is coming 46% off of our self checkouts. So a lot of, a lot of the public is choosing that as an option. Especially with the addition of our holds being over by the recent arrivals area. A lot of folks are taking advantage of picking up their their holds there and then checking out themselves. Also, we note that the children really love to check out their own materials and they're taking advantage of that equipment on the second floor. We do have self checkouts on every floor of the library and we have statistics for each of them to reflect why they're where they are. They're all in use. Also, from the circulation report, I wanted to share that we've always, we're always trying to do something for sustainability and the circulation staff had a really great idea here recently at the end of the year. We have sunsetted the use of our single use plastic. We had these recyclable bags that we were putting all of our parking lot materials in since early on in the pandemic and we've recently acquired a lot more of our circulating totes that the patrons can check out. And we were like, hey, this is a really clever idea. Why not just put all these items in here and make it just that much easier for us to transport these items? They're more durable bags and it's a greener solution. So if you're using parking lot pickup, you will notice that we have reusable totes now that we're using for those materials. All right, on to programming. Yeah, go ahead.
Question, how is the, I love the reusable totes and take them, check them out often. How is the return though? Are we getting them back or do we lose?
I don't have, I don't, yeah, I don't have statistics at hand for you about that. It is true that it has been kind of hard for folks to return those at times, which is why we acquired certainly more of them so that they were always some available. But yeah, I I think that sometimes, you know, if patrons renew their items, they may just renew the bags with them too and the bags don't come back. So it was really more of a question of making sure that we had the right quantity in the first place.
Okay, thank you.
But they do have a, they have a barcode on them, so they get checked out just like the books do and they need to come back. All right, programming. So we had our meet the author event which was on December 1st and we hosted Omar Alakad. And we had nearly 70 screens that viewed that particular event. So we were really thrilled for that and our partnership with Jack Doppold from Northwestern. As well as our programming partners, Amy Barrow and Barbara Goodman. So we were really thrilled about that. Good positive response to that programming. Speaking of programming, we just kicked off our winter reading club on January 3rd and that continues through the end of February. This year, our theme is to encourage folks to read outside of the genres that they usually do. If you go to our website, we've provided some reading lists for folks to try out something that they may not ordinarily read. So do check that out and we're offering the same incentive prizes this year as we have in in years past. Generously funded by the Friends of the Wilmot Public Library. Speaking of programming, we did have to make a difficult decision here in January regarding in-person programming. You may recall that our New Year's Eve Eve music event that's typically held on December 30th. We went ahead and suspended that program recognizing the rise of Omicron in our community and the high rates of transmission of COVID. We are really excited to be able to offer in-person programming again. We were doing that for a while late in the fall and seeing really great participation. And it felt like things were getting back to normal or what seemed like it until the numbers showed that it just wasn't time for that. So we have suspended in-person programming until we see those numbers improve locally and then we'll start slowly reintroducing safe in-person programming again. We'll follow the same procedures that we did in the past by trying to keep those program attendance events to a smaller crowd and to try to encourage social distancing as much as possible in those events. So stay tuned for more announcements about our in-person programming. For now, we're fully remote for our events. Hopefully you've all received our latest newsletter in your mailboxes within the last week or so. This was due to hit homes late December, early January. And per the last comment that I just made, COVID had its impact on our print shop and they were not able to complete production of the newsletter in time for it to get to the post office and hit mailboxes in our community because that whole operation was wiped out. So it is a very serious thing and it has a lot of sweeping impacts. That said, the newsletter is out there and is advertising all of the program and programs and events that we have going on right now. And also on the back cover, it features features the announcement, this is reversed, but it features the announcement of our One Book Everyone Reads program for this coming spring. And that title is Three Girls from Bronzeville by Dawn Turner. You can begin to place holds on that item now and begin reading it. We've got a whole host of programs that we're developing in support of our One Book Everyone Reads program. And you'll certainly be hearing more about that here in the coming months. Dawn Turner will be joining us virtually on May 11th. So we've got, we got a good bit bit of time before we're going to get to to the events specific to that, but I know folks are always excited for that announcement, what the title is going to be. So there it is. A few other exciting announcements to share with you. We've got some new staff that are joining us here soon. I am thrilled to announce that we are going to be hiring. We have hired our new assistant director. Leah White is joining us from the Skokie Public Library. And she will be starting here on February 7th. So I'm looking forward to introducing you all to her at a future board meeting. It may be our February meeting or thereafter. So looking forward to sharing the goals of our new assistant director with you here very soon. Coincidentally, we hired Leah's former boss for our technical services department. Former director of the ELO Public Library, Matt Womack, has joined us as the assistant manager of the technical services department. Matt decided to make a late career change and get back to his roots as a cataloger. And he also has a lot of background with Polaris, actually our integrated library system, having worked for them. So he's a real asset and we're thrilled to have him on our team as well. Also in technical services, I'm thrilled to announce that Carly Stouse is joining us as our cataloging librarian. Carly has been with us in a number of capacities over the last few years. She recently is a graduate with her library science degree and has a specialty in technical services as well as youth services, which was a perfect match for her new role where she is going to be cataloging all of our youth material. And she will also have a shift in our youth services department as well to get more familiar with the collections and how they're used there. So we're thrilled to have Carly full time. And I'm also happy to announce that this Monday, yesterday, was Annabella's first day in our digital services department. So we're we're continuing to grow and to fill some vacancies as we build back from some challenges over the course of the last year or so. All right, I'm going to pause for a moment to take a sip of my tea. Does anyone have any questions about the director's report before I get into the strategic plan?
One thought, Anthony, and if it's if it's not worth it, then you can ignore this, but you were talking before about the 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 new the the equipment with with Patsy and with Mike, if it's like we could do a quick, like a 20 second video or something and post that on the website so people could see it operating that way was just one thought, but and again, you can kick it to the curb if it's a bad idea.
That's a great idea. I love it. All right. Any other questions or comments from the director's report? All right. So I I think what I will do as far as the summary for the strategic plan. There's a couple of ways that we can handle this. I can kind of paint some broad brushstrokes and talk about the themes of the strategic plan. And if if you want to get into anything in in particular, we can certainly do that as well. So let me, let me just start by saying that we had agreed, recognizing that the strategic plan was going to sunset in June of 21, that we were going to take this fiscal year to renew all of the objectives of that original strategic plan, effectively taking it into its fourth year. While we continue to plan forward for what our next development is going to be for this new iteration of the strategic plan that we're going to work on over the course of the next six months or so and have that guide our our strategies as we move forward. So all of the objectives that we're working towards here are to reinforce a number of the items that we've been working on already for the last three years. And so what you're seeing in this year's summary is a is a continuity of our enhanced engagement, both with our community, with our staff and with our partners. And our efforts to be more community centric in the forums that we're developing and the programming that we're doing to help support our community initiatives. We have been really focused in this last year in developing services for the business community and our outreach to businesses. We're best part and parcel with our new business librarian, John Ammonson. Where that's part and parcel with our new business librarian, John Ammonson. We also have our genealogy and local history librarian, Eva Ann Johnson. Who has greatly enhanced the programming and services that we have regarding local history. And the genealogy programming that we're offering. She's also been a strong partner for us in helping to bring forward the programming that we're planning for Willmet 150. As we are celebrating the village's sesquicentennial this year. We've also done a lot to enhance our reader services. Including the further development and refinement of our website and how that promotes our collections. We've also continued to do a lot of development with our author programming. You may recall that we have begun a partnership with a number of area libraries in this last year. An organization called Illinois Libraries Presents. Which is a partnership of dozens of libraries across Northern Illinois. Who are all joining hands together in order to bring in big name authors that individually we would not be able to bring to our communities. But when we share these opportunities to host these programs collectively, we can have a much stronger impact. So Willmet is part of that program. We've also greatly enhanced our outreach and programming to youth services. Our youth services staff has been absolutely exceptional and clearly challenged a lot by what's been happening throughout the pandemic. And has been doing an awful lot to keep families and children engaged. When their whole worlds have been turned upside down. We've also been doing a lot of tweaks to the building, as you know, through the capital improvement project, but also. That has afforded us an opportunity to reevaluate the building as we've been looking at our various spaces, our furnishings. The purposing of various areas, even little changes that we've been able to make have had big impacts. You may recall that back in 2020, we went fine free. And that has had a number of impacts on us as well positively. We're seeing greater usage of our collections. We're seeing higher rates of engagement. Our cardholder, active cards. Over 70% of our library cards have been active, active in the last year despite the pandemic. And nearly 80% of households in Willmat have an active library card in them, which is pretty remarkable. So there's a high rate of engagement there and we feel that. By applying that equity lens and eliminating barriers to access like fines, we've been able to increase use of the library. Taking that equity lens further, we've been really doing a lot to try to enhance equity diversity and inclusion. Our EDI efforts were built into this strategic plan before that was really a term that was used an awful lot. By champion, the, the leadership of our past administration and board for bringing that forward and for making that a strong initiative. The staff has run with it. And continues to do individual professional development as well as the programming and collection development. That they're doing in support of those initiatives. The big projects that we had in this past year would be individually monumental, but we took on a lot of tasks as well. This last year that I really want to commend the staff for taking on. I've talked a lot about the capital improvement project this year. That alone is really daunting and takes over a lot of time and impacts the public in a big way. That is a big deal unto itself, but we've taken on a lot of other projects as well. The RFID project would be a major project in any given year, let alone in a pandemic year. And the staff really did a fabulous job again, handling a quarter of a million items. Changing their procedures, working through adaptations to try to launch this to the public. Adapting workflows, backup house. Changing the way that we process materials, the way that we de-accession items. It's been a huge, a huge impact. And we'll also change the way that we're able to study the usage of the collection and look at our metrics in an effort to better serve our communities through data-driven decision-making. We've also completed our website redesign project. As we talked about earlier, the website is a work in progress. It is only two months old. There are a number of items that are still on our list that are not complete. The item that was shared in public comment is certainly one of the areas that we definitely. Still have on our list and we're not satisfied with as an organization or board. There's a lot to improve there. So. We continue to work on the refinement of the database and the way that we present information to the public there. However, we've made a heck of a lot of improvements to the website as well. To promote access to our collections as well as our, a number of our resources and the way that we present information and programming to the community. Staff growth and professional development has really grown at an exponential rate through 2020. With the, every month you've seen in my director's report, all of the webinars, the events, the training, the programming that my staff has been involved in. In terms of professional development so that they can enhance the skills that they provide back to the community. The staff just has been completely engaged with their own individual development. And that pays dividends in the services ultimately that we offer to the community. We've also completely redesigned our newsletter. We've had three different iterations of this new newsletter that have come out since we launched that in the, in the summer. Sarah Beth's team has done a remarkable job in enhancing our communications. And the newsletter looks really, really sharp. So that is a huge task that's taken on. And then at the top of all this, I mentioned how we've been growing our partnerships and trying to define those as well. Those are the key highlights. I would be happy to pull out any individual items or to discuss anything that's on your mind. Regarding our progress towards the strategic plan.
I have a question. There was some talk about having some of the board members. Do Lisa, Director McDonald, about sitting at the front, getting some input from some of the patrons? Is that something that is ongoing? Is that? Something you're looking for trustees to help with?
That was put on hold because Anthony wanted us in the vestibule and I don't think any. Patron would stop in the vestibule during the winter and talk to us. And so I think COVID sort of put a glitch in it. But I think the key was to find someplace like there's a place where they put book suggestions. And I think you've got the, that might be a good place, but I think it needs to be sort of in the front. I know he didn't want us roaming around, which I would do. Talk to the patrons and just, you know, introduce ourselves and just get about a three minutes of comment in terms of just basically. What they liked, what, you know, what they would, you know, what, what, what we could do to serve them better. And so I think we have a difference of opinion of that. I feel comfortable with in terms of not, you know, just ask it. I'm just. Yeah, I've got a few minutes. So that was one thing. I think the other thing that we had said in conjunction with the strategic plan. Is to have a half day session and you all agreed to it. With the staff, with the department heads to talk about, to get their perspectives as to, you know, each of their departments in terms of what's going on. What their stress, what their weaknesses are, what they would like to see, what can be improved, not necessarily weaknesses. But what could be improved and what the future is looking like in terms of where they see their services going. So that is, I think, the next step in the strategic planning process because I think we need to have a better understanding. Of what's going on in each of the departments, find the talk to the patrons. And that's part of the process, but I think it's good to get a background as to what's going on within the library. Director Austin, do you want to talk a little bit more about that?
One, one footnote, if I can, can I, I'm sorry, can I add one thing before Anthony speaks? Lisa, if we ever do have, roll out the idea of board members being able to interact in the library with patrons. Not being able to project the future in terms of what COVID is going to cause us. You know, but if we're wearing masks for the, for the next several years. I would suggest that we get some kind of photo ID. So we're not just approaching patrons as masked people and they can't know our faces. So at least we have a photo we can show them.
Well, she's got your name badge.
Yeah, well, I know, but that's just our name. I, I think it's important to have, I mean, just have a. I, I think for this kind of outreach, it would be helpful to a patron to have. An image of what our faces look like as, as we're being, if we're talking to them. So. Yeah.
Plastic thing.
We can take the picture off of the website and put it onto a badge or something. I, I just, I'm not sure what the, what the easy solution is, but something that.
But that's a good idea, Stuart.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's great. Yeah. Our youth services librarians by example have done that. They wear, they wear buttons so that the. The children can, can recognize who their librarians are. Yeah, I think there's a lot of opportunity for us to do community engagement. I think that's a big part of what we need to be working on here as we start developing this next phase of. Of development for us with the strategic plan. So yes, it is true that I, I would prefer that we greet. The public in a space that is more neutral. And that we're not approaching people within the building as they're trying to do their business. And I want to try to find a space that is going to be appropriate for us to make sure that there's ample space around us for social distancing and so on, that we're going, not going to be blocking any high traffic areas. When we do that type of community engagement. That said, I think there are a number of ways that we can do this. So. With the auditorium reopening, I, I know that that's down in the basement. But we could schedule time and we could invite the community to come down there. We could host forums like this in a virtual environment. We can solicit feedback in a number of ways. We can send out postcards. We can request it digitally. So there's a number of ways that I think that we can continue to collect feedback from the public about how to inform this next phase of the strategic plan. And yes, I am looking forward to us holding. A workshop where the staff and the board can come together and can talk more about our development as we move forward.
Cause one of the early things was to have food, but we can't have food right now. Because refreshments would always get somebody in, but there is a hold on eating and drinking right now.
Yeah, we want to keep, want to encourage people to keep their masks on for right now. Yeah.
So. Cause food is the ultimate attractor. So. Okay, thank you.
All right. Other, other comments or questions about the strategic plan? Or my reports?
Just one question, Anthony. One of the things that I had asked was, do you see, do you see all these still being? This key areas and that's probably something to explore. Are there any, is there anything that you think is missing that's not included? And I also know that you want to review the mission and the vision, but.
I do, yeah, I do think that it is time for us to review the, the vision, the vision and mission statements. The staff and I have talked about that a fair bit and. Yes, it is copied verbatim in a number of places in our policy, like the ones we just approved this evening. So when we do make those changes, we're going to have to, you know, review policy again and make those changes. But I think, you know, by and large, the scope of the things that, that we do as a library are all. Generally covered by the strategic plan. It might just be a matter of semantics. And how we're going to convey. How successful we are in accomplishing the objectives. That we may want to phrase our objectives in a way that help us. To more clearly delineate and define what the action steps are going to be that will satisfy that. I guess that's the one bit of feedback that the staff and I have regarding this strategic plan is that. You know, they're, they're broad, the way that these objectives are written. So. You'll, you'll see the report goes on and on in a lot of cases and you're like, well, is that really what we meant when we wrote the strategic plan objective? Is, is that the thing that we wanted to put in there? So. Maybe we want to phrase things in a way that makes it clearer for us to understand, are we hitting our benchmarks? But we've got a number of examples that we can borrow. And like I said earlier, we do a lot of them. Environmental scanning and look at the way other libraries and other organizations are drafting their strategic plans. And I think we've got a lot of examples we can use.
Okay, thank you. You've been busy. You and your staff have been very busy. So.
It's been a busy year.
This is like the longest number of pages, I think, for a, for a board meeting I've ever seen. I don't know if there's been more than 129 pages, but I thought that was a record.
He's keeping the paper mills and. Isn't it so?
The digital ones, yeah.
Yeah. Still hardcore. Okay. Anything else that you'd like to add to your director's report?
I think that's all I got tonight. You've heard a lot from me.
Okay. Any other questions? Anybody else have any? For Director Austin? Okay, thank you. Okay, committee reports. Trustee Neil, and do you have anything regarding ILA?
I do not.
Okay, just, and Director Austin, do you have anything regarding the rails and ILA?
The only thing I would add is on your agenda, you're going to see that there, we do have the legislative meetup coming up on, on President's Day. That is an ILA sponsored event. Our elected officials have really been good about attending that in the past. So I would encourage you, if you can. To attend that. It is a virtual meeting this year. And if not, I do think that they're going to record that and we can access it later. But if you do want to attend, just let me know and we'll get you registered.
But the handouts tend to be the most interesting. So are you going?
I go, yep, I will go.
So if you can just share the handouts as to what the focus is in terms of legislative issues, I think that tends to be really helpful in terms of summarizing it. Okay, those that might not be going. Thank you. You've got the President's Day Legislative Meetup. You've got the Village of Willmet is celebrating 100 and, oh, communication. You all got communication today. There were four positive comments and one. Congratulating the, and we never state the names of who sent it out of. Privacy, but one firm congratulating the library. On their rating and their award from one of our. And she smiles and looks away. Thank you. And so we appreciate that. And then you got two compliments for Director Austin and the entire staff regarding COVID protocols. And then there was one complimenting Christine for assistance with Shutterfly. Two days before Christmas, a woman whose mother had died and so she was putting together a booklet. And so that was a wonderful one to see. And then you've got some other. Communication and I think Ms. Lawler. Communicated that all the board got, and then we got another one from Director Austin today that was anonymous. So that's the communication. And you got President's Day, the village of Willmet was celebrated 150th birthday. The library is participating in Winterfest. It's on February 12th. And they will have an ice sculpture. There'll be ice sculptures all along the village and. There may be some other entertainment to be confirmed. And you'll be seeing that. Virtually, you'll be seeing that through digital communication and the hope is that it will be in conjunction with the village's. Sunday celebration on February 12th. Anything else to add on that one? Okay. And so there are a lot of things going for that, that Sunday. So please stay tuned and you can all see it by just going to. Willmet150.org to see all the things that are going on. You've talked about the one book everyone reads and then in terms of additional. New business. Joan, do you want to talk a little bit about what we did with the junior high? With the student leadership village in terms of, that was your first time attending?
That was my first time, right? This is a program that's been going on for many, many years, I think almost 50 years where. Number of students, probably more in the past, I think they had 30 junior high students, eighth graders. Who were chosen to participate and village president sent up Plunkett spoke on behalf of the board, village board, that the students will be invited. To go to attend a village board meeting or a number of them and actually participate. So they'll, she stressed how they'll get to sit in the. Driver's seat and make some, and how would they make decisions? How would they allocate funds? How would they? Feel about certain things going on in their village? And so I think it's, it's a wonderful program and probably an eye opener to. People who never think twice about how things get done. And. So they did have representation, both elected representatives and staff from. Lisa and I attended. And then there was District 39, there was Village and then there was. Park Board. So they had us in, I think, just two or three separate rooms. And the students came to us and each one of us. Spoke on behalf of who we were, how we got there. I mean. How were we elected? Were we staff and what we did? And they had a series of questions for us. And. It was really, I loved it. I just, my kids are older, so I, I loved being around these. 13 year olds, most of whom were very attentive and inquisitive and. Asked good questions. So. I, I think it's a great program and the week put this on and. I think that it's something that we also take a turn doing. I, I really was engaged and some of the kids, one young man actually came up afterwards and said. He mentioned a few staff members who he recalled that were very kind to him, library staff members and. I haven't had a chance to share that, one of whom I think, I know is still working. The other one I believe is retired. So the impact that library staff have on young. Minds and, and it was delightful. It was really great. And. I think most of them never realized either that there are so many people, maybe their neighbors or so forth, or their, maybe their families or their parents. Who run and are elected. And again, I don't. And again, I don't think it ever crosses their mind that there's an election in Willmet, like there's an election for state rep and senators and the president. So it, and then one other thing I have to say is that I really enjoyed getting to hear what other, well, in this case, my, my group, there was a gentleman from District 39 who has a huge job, as so many others do, of course. But I learned a lot myself. So it was, well, has anyone else attended and been part of that?
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's always very fulfilling. It's a great, great experience. Yeah.
Yeah. It's called the League of Student and Government Leaders and the League of Voters does it every year. It's, it's an introduction to civics in real time. So yeah, I'm glad you're listening.
Yeah, in the past, the library used to have a board. That was a long time ago. Students would participate in the library board, but that was cut out some years ago in terms of that participation. So yeah, thank you. So the next thing is we're going to be doing next month, Director Austin's evaluation. And so the process is going to be, we're going to be sending you any evaluation form with his accomplishments, a brief summary of his accomplishments, which have been many. And then we're going to have a deadline. So we would like it back within that deadline because Joan is going to compile it. Additionally, we will be doing some one-on-one interviews with some of his staff as well as I'll be talking to the Kinnellworth president, just to get, you know, what's working and just to get a general idea. So probably next month at our meeting, we will be going into closed session, which is what we usually do when we go to review. Okay? And so you'll be hearing from us. And if you've got questions, just holler. Thank you. Is there any other new business? Okay. Anything else going once, going twice? I move. Do you have anything else to say, Director Austin? Okay, I'm gonna do this motion. I move that the board adjourned this meeting at 7:43. Is there a second?
I will second.
It's been moved by trustee McDonald and seconded by trustee Wolf that the meeting adjourned at 7:43. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Have a good evening and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you. Good night, all.